Right away. Yeah, that's what I could ask, you know. I appreciate you guys put this much thought into it. Oh, they were a little, I, I. Two years in a row, I had this like. And just like. I'm like, just tell me what you want. I was the class three. Tim was here for a whole year. And they still couldn't figure out exactly what they wanted. So. Like I said, the code. I said. Because there will be some people that would ask for help. All busy. So I do, uh, talk through on that.
Yeah, but a lot of stuff will change, not just all change, but technical stuff will change. I'm marrying as an expert with the lighting.
Yeah.
I'm a. Like, I know the couple. And then in the end, we're just gonna have to. To go up to make sure that.
We're not doing anything to sugar you.
You've been out in the sun again.
I really haven't quite much.
Really? How are you?
I'm liking, liking the boom, sir. You got it. No. I mean, we can't make them see. You know, you make sense when he's alive. Thing here is in the weather council. That's the plan.
My only thought was that we didn't know. And it's something that's thrown out. But it isn't. Yes, that's.
I don't see how you do, but I'll do anything. And then the other problem is weight to me.
Why?
Yeah. No, uh, that's. Yeah.
That's true.
And we should ask Gabe because we gave them an extension. And then I heard teacher talking about a question last week.
He sent an email, an article, or pre-existing call. Did you see what I sent you? Yeah. I understand.
I saw that. It was, it was, it was an article on Facebook.
Like, well, you're doing that. You can do whatever.
Go into the lead of that and then we get our.
Hi, Bill. I'm good. I never really know what's going on at this point. I just kind of show up wherever my calendar told me to, and then I. I go from there. Against purple blazer. A sharp. I got a green on the screen. Full of juice. I probably. Just not bother.
For the common person or the. Yeah, but they.
Right. I don't think so, no.
See, you have a phone, huh?
Oh, I don't.
I think the steam, I think the steam.
No, that's the heater.
Is it really?
Yeah, it, it turns on if the water goes below, um. I think eighty.
Oh, okay. I thought you had a hot tub there.
No, it's to heat the pool.
Oh, okay.
We were in it on Sunday.
Wait.
That's cold.
On Mother's Day.
Well, this case is warm. A pool, yeah.
It's another friend.
I wouldn't be doing that. And I would be the one enjoying the fruits.
Ah.
You know what? If it was, yeah, not a big one, but a small one, but we would lose the entire backyard. Like, if we did it, that would be a hit. And Andy didn't. When the kids were throwing out there, play ball and stuff back there. And now that they don't. It's like, we're gonna spend that kind of money when they're gonna be off and go to college. So. I think he could manipulate us.
We just settle on a hot tub.
Yeah.
You know what?
I need to know.
No, because I want. On a float. That's all I want in the world.
Okay, it's seven thirty. First quarter's almost over. Next, we're probably down.
I know, I know. My wife is there watching it. She's a hardliner. Hello, Bill. Hey, folks. Good evening and welcome to the planning board, um, for May fourteenth. Um, I would ask now that you either silence or turn off your cell phones. That would be greatly appreciated and open the meeting up. Uh, so pursuant to the open public meetings law, this is the state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in publication in the Union County Hawk. On this, on January second, twenty twenty five, posting on the borough website and posting and filing of said notice in the office of the municipal clerk. This is a regular meeting of the board. Um, at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence and a flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't recall, please.
Mayor Blumentock?
Here.
Ms. Lysak?
Here.
Councilman Carney?
Here.
Uh, Chair Greed?
Here.
Ms. Vilaggio?
Here.
Mr. Neersted?
Here.
Mr. Barkin? Ms. Hay is excused. Ms. Bianco?
Here.
And Mr. Byers?
Here.
Okay, if everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes of the prior meeting, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as they are?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
All who are in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a, um, we have a discussion item here tonight, and that's a request for consideration to amend the zoning. Designation of fifty-four Third Avenue. That's block twenty-two oh four, block twenty-six, uh, Garden Homes LLC. Um, so at this time, I'll ask, uh, the representative to come up and introduce.
Good evening. My name is Mark. Where, where would you like to start?
Yeah, no, I was looking for the microphone. If, oh, okay. That's okay. If you can speak loud enough, we're fine with that, too. That's even better idea.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mark Liebman. It's M A R C L E I B M A N. I'm with the firm of Kesa, Chehanian, and Gian Tomasi. Uh, we are the proponents of the rezoning request. Uh, we have submitted, and I have with us tonight, our, our professional planner, Catherine Gregory, a report from her. That explains what we want to do and, and why we want to do it. You basically have this garden apartment complex that has been there for about eighty-five years. Um, the zone that it's in is zone for single family. It's obviously pre-existing. We think that it probably predates the zoning ordinance, but we had a hard time getting really good records, um, in response to Oprah request. Probably because of the age of them and things get lost in the sands of time. But essentially, we have this non-conforming structure. Our client is looking to purchase the property. Uh, the non-compliant zoning is creating some issues in that acquisition. Uh, if this building were to be lost in some kind of a catastrophe. You'd only be able to put a single family home there. Uh, lenders do not want to lend money to finance. Projects don't, don't have zoning that is compliant. And, and that is really what's causing the problem that we have, and that's why we're asking you to consider rezoning the property. Obviously, there's been no issues with it. There's been no complaints that we're aware of. Nothing was discovered in that regard. Um, it seems to be a well-kept, well-maintained property. Our client is looking to purchase it, continue to maintain it, continue to operate it. Uh, as, as it's currently existing. We're just asking that the zoning match what's been there for eight plus decades. That's it in a nutshell, Chair.
Okay.
And my planner should answer any questions.
Yeah, and I'd like to, uh, ask the board to hold their questions until after the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, clear. Miss Gregory knows.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I need to be sworn in or not?
Uh, yeah, if you would speak in the mic, that would be great.
Oh, sorry. I don't, I don't know if I need to be sworn in or not. Just in case.
You solemnly swear affirm to testify about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, something like.
Yes, I do. Uh, so for the record, my name is Catherine Gregory. I am a principal of Gregory Associates with offices in both Fort Lee and Wall, New Jersey. Um, and while my offices are not in Union County, I did grow up in Union, in Union County, just so I add that, too. I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since, uh, two thousand, so that's a long time. I've testified before planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I am also a municipal planner. Uh, in the borough of Edgewater, and also a zoning board planner in the borough of Paramus and, uh, Fairlawn, New Jersey. As well as an affordable housing planner in Ridgefield, New Jersey. And many years ago. Gabe and I used to work together at the same firm.
She was my first boss.
Ah, okay.
And your licenses are all current?
Yes, yes, they are.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend if you're Gregory, be accepted as an expert, field professional planning.
That'd be it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so hopefully you've had the benefit of, uh, rehearing the report that, uh, was prepared by myself on, uh, dated April second, uh, twenty twenty-five. Um, as our attorney mentioned to you, uh, we really tried to do. Uh, some research as to. How this potential building came, I'm sorry, this building potentially came about. Um, and as he stated, there weren't really any records on approvals. But the best thing that I could find, uh, when you take a look at my report. Is the fact that, um, we, I did seem to get, um, a couple of maps. Uh, the first map would be on page four, which is a nineteen oh six map, which basically shows a lotting pattern. And what's very typical from the turn of the century are lots that are twenty or twenty-five feet wide. And somebody would come and buy up as many lots as they wanted at that time. Um, you'll also, uh, see that the, the next map is actually, uh, just a black and white, uh, nineteen oh six map. But then when you take a look at the next map that I was able to get, which was from nineteen thirty-six. Um, you'll see that, uh, there was a parcel that was somehow created between nineteen oh six and nineteen thirty-six. And our records indicate also from the county that the buildings are built from, uh, in nineteen forty. Uh, and so with that said, we, like I said, we, we didn't get any, unfortunately, any records on how it was approved. It may or may not have predated zoning. We're not a hundred percent sure. Uh, but as you probably know, more towards the turn of the last century. Uh, zoning was a little more, I'm gonna call it Lucy Goosey than it is today. Um, there's a lot less development and, um, it, I mean, I would venture to even say that, you know, this development might have been built, um. Prior to a lot of homes in the neighborhood. But with that said, over the years, for some reason, it's never been rezoned. And maybe the hope was that it would go away and it would be a series of single-family homes on the site. But I think that you probably know, just from driving around the state of New Jersey. That most garden apartments still exist and they are in pretty good condition. Uh, they're brick buildings. They're not built out of concrete. They're not built out of wood. They're built out of brick. And they're pretty solid. And most of the ones that I've seen are actually very well maintained and usually landscaped very well. Uh, so I don't think that this is a use that is going away anytime soon. Um, and as I've stated in my report, um, the only places where multifamily is actually permitted. Is either where it has to be combined with affordable housing or in a mixed-use zone. Um, we don't really fit either of those cases. We're an existing, uh, multifamily use since nineteen forty. Uh, the density of the site, you calculated, is forty-five dwelling units an acre. Um, I'd also like to note that I did do a lot size analysis, which is located on page seven. The average lot size is point one six seven three acres. Um, and as indicated in my report. Um, we actually are about four point seven five times larger than the average lot size in the area on the block. And almost seven times larger than the minimum lot size for the zone, which is five thousand square feet. Um, so we do believe that a rezoning particular to our site is warranted. We don't believe it's. Actually a spot zoning, and the reason that I say that is that we're not really benefiting from a rezoning to what's there. We're not asking for something more. We're just asking for what's there. Meaning that the borough would, uh, draft an ordinance that would fit what is on the site today. That's all we are asking for. We are not asking for an increase in density, an increase in height, or any, and anything of that nature. Um, so, uh, with that said, uh, we're open to discussion and questions. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted me to add. Okay.
Okay. With that, I'll open it up for the board for, uh. Questions of this witness? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In New Jersey, pre-existing non-conforming, if it's burnt down to the ground, is typically allowed to rebuild. Is, I just want to make sure that's what you're saying here. It, you're not allowed to rebuild, and that's why you're here asking for the rezoning? Uh, actually, I didn't look at your ordinance in terms of that, but different ordinances may require that if it's more than fifty percent, you'll lose your non-conforming status. Um, if you don't utilize the existing footprint and or the existing foundation, then you're not allowed to rebuild. Um, so, a- and as our attorney indicated that. In, in today's environment, it's, it, yes, I know this is a, it goes to financial, right? And that's not something you should consider. But the fact is, is that, you know, the property is not going to be able to be turned over because it's been non-conformant for so long. And lenders don't like non-conformity. They don't like unknowns. They don't like. I, I understand what you're saying. I work with lenders every day, um, as a real estate appraiser. So it depends on the lender. Every lender has different requirements. But pre-existing non-conforming in the state of New Jersey is typically okay. I mean, if it burns down to the ground, it's gonna get rebuilt to what was previously there. And so I, I just, I'm just curious as to why you, you, you want that etched in stone?
So, um, my understanding of the municipal language was that that's not actually. If you have a non-conformal structure that violates the zoning. And it is completely destroyed, you are required to then comply with the zoning that is applicable to the property. There's a series of cases, I did come prepared to argue this, uh, but there's a series of cases that's. And the idea is that over time, gradually, properties will come into conformity, either through destruction. Or just wear and tear as they slowly dilapidated and unusable. Slowly, the zoning will take hold over time, and that's why you're not allowed to just rebuild what you used to have there if it's completely destroyed. In Fairlawn, where I'm the board attorney, Catherine's a professional player. We have an ordinance that says if you have more than fifty percent destruction, you have to comply with the ordinance. And it is a never-ending problem that we have when people are renovating their, their homes. And they start to work and they see, oh, gosh, the other two walls are completely decrepit and falling apart. And they start to replace them. Well, now you've destroyed one of the fifty percent of the home. Stop work order is issued. The project is halted. You now have to build a home in a location that meets all of the setback requirements. And you're not grandfathered in anymore, say, on your side yard, so you're trying to, you have to come into conformity. And I would defer to Mr. Frazier.
Well, I would agree. Um, streaming with a lot of what you just said. But in this particular case, as the planner noted, we're talking about brick buildings here. So the idea that these brick buildings are gonna burn down, uh, to a hundred percent destruction. Seems speculative at best, but let me ask you this question, if I may. Is, is the contract here contingent upon? Uh, the contract to purchase, is it contingent upon this board rezoning?
Um, I'm not the transactional attorney, so I just can't answer that question.
Well, I'll ask that question then of the planner, because that would seem to be a highly important question here, given that you're coming here to argue that, oh, lenders and this transaction. So it seems to me that would be kind of key information.
I will, I was telling you, I've had conversations with the principal about this. And, you know, we didn't go through this exercise for fun, like.
I didn't think you did. That's why I'm very surprised you don't have the answer to the question I asked.
We needed, and what I was advised was. The lender was, um, once demanding a personal guarantee.
Is your client unable to do that?
I didn't ask him if he was or wasn't, but he said.
You, you raised the issue, Mr. David.
And then the other thing is, I think the rate that they were gonna charge was gonna be higher than what they were.
How much higher?
I didn't ask.
Again, if you're gonna put these issues into play, these are reasonable questions.
Happy to provide this information, Mr. Frazier. Come back with this information, if that's important for the board. But we just seen, it seems to us that this would be kind of easy left. Like, you've got a building that's been here for eighty-five years. It's not compliant with the zoning. It would make sense to create zoning that, that makes it conform.
Has there been a request for a certificate of non-conformity?
No, we, we haven't.
Why not?
We thought this would be a, a, a better alternative rather than that. Because the certificate also wouldn't give us the protection that we need because, again, if the building were destroyed, if something happened. That doesn't give us the right to rebuild what was there.
I think the, um, I think the planner had said something before about not being able to use the existing footprint or words to that effect. Did I hear you correctly?
Well, in, in the case of a destruction.
Well, wouldn't it be best to use the existing footprint?
Well, I know, I, what I meant was that in case we couldn't, for whatever reason, I, I.
Can you, can you give me such a reason why you wouldn't be able to use the existing footprint?
If somehow it was destroyed, I, I, and again, I know you talked about fire and brick building, but, um, but.
Well, you brought that up first.
Yeah, I know, but there, I mean, it's very possible that just even through, um, if there is, first of all, I don't, I doubt that the whole thing would. Wouldn't be destroyed in a fire, but it is possible that there could be a fire at the building. And it is plausible that when fire services come to the building, that there could be other types of damage in terms of from the water. So, um, you know, it's hard for me to say, uh, you know, I used to practice architecture, but I'm not licensed and I haven't practiced since like nineteen ninety-eight.
You and Mr. Costanza.
So it's, you know, it's hard for me to say at this point, but, um. But, but anywho, um, but you know, from, from a planning perspective, though, what you have is, you don't have this natural attrition of this site. You know, what, what our attorney talked about was. That the hope is that eventually the site will turn into the correct zone, and for eighty-five years it hasn't. It hasn't. I don't think it will ever go away. I don't think. Anyone would destroy this and build single-family homes in this location when there happens a very multifamily. Um, so, you know, with that said, it. Technically, it's, it's bad planning and zoning to have, you know. Usually a large number of non-conforming uses, but what you have is a large non-conforming use in a residential zone, even though it's on only a one lot. It's on a very large lot in the residential zone. So, and I go back to, it's highly unlikely that it would ever naturally attrition into the, the single-family residential zone.
But if the rezoning were granted. If one wanted to. One could demolish this and put up a new, um, multifamily, correct?
Well, they could. But as I stated earlier. The idea is that we are asking for a zoning ordinance that fits what's there today, which means that. It would probably be rebuilt. Just like it is today, unless, unless they ask for variances, which obviously this board or zoning board does not have to grant. So. That, again, we're, we're, like I said before, we're not asking for more than what's there. We're just asking for some zoning to make this conforming to its own, its own site.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Go ahead, Vince.
I just want to ask a clarifying question, uh, specific to the, to the law that you're citing. Uh. Following what Ms. Bianco said, I, I. Understand what she's saying. Mr. Frazier knows I have some personal experience with this. The destruction would have to be more than fifty percent. Right? For you to not be allowed to rebuild what was there. It's not like a hundred percent or nothing, right?
That's very commonly how these ordinance.
Correct.
I am positive that is how God was ordinance us.
Yes, it's fifty percent. I'm looking in the ordinance right now.
Okay. So. That, that was my. That's my comment for this.
Kathy?
My question or, or comment. I think we rezoned Third Avenue back in two thousand.
Nine.
Nine, um. Like at that time with the, like. You know, in two thousand nine. That. That zone wasn't multi-family, so. A, a car A one or R. Three more A. Um. And then at that time, we rezoned it. To a, a single-family zone. That part of Third Avenue. Um. Your, you know. Uh. So at that time, then, uh, you could have came to us. Who asked for a certificate of non-conformity. Uh, not even before that, just with the, with the zoning laws. But that's, you know, that's past. So. Um. Based upon what you said. And what you indicated. Um, if we say, um. Like if, uh, you put up. If, uh. There, oh. A with a. A rezoning. What would the zone be? Would it be, uh, multifamily up to thirty-two apartments? You know, I don't, uh, like I'm asking you.
Sure.
Like. Is there a specific name of this, um? Zone that, that. That you're looking for?
So what we would propose, and we'd be happy to assist in the drafting of an ordinance for your consideration. Is an ordinance that permits what's there currently to remain. So we would precisely define the density, precisely define the height. Every one of the setbacks, the parking, the impervious coverage. So that whoever owns this property is locked into it, so we don't have to worry about somebody. Saying, oh, I, as a right, I can knock it down and build something bigger, denser, et cetera.
So then. Like all the bulk. You know, the bulk will be there. What exactly?
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly what it is now. But. We don't know what the name of the new zone would be.
We can name it whatever. Whatever. I'm just curious. Multifamily zone.
But the bulk would be like what's exactly there.
Exactly what's there.
Yeah.
Correct.
So. The new owners or, or whoever. Wouldn't be able to enter a story.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. There's no intention.
Unless they come to us and say that we, you know, for a variance.
Yeah.
Or two.
Or three.
Correct.
Yeah. Ten variants.
There, there's no intention to do that. There's no intention to seek such relief. They just want the zoning to match what they, what they want to buy. They want to keep it exactly the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just for the record, so do you know, um, I am a retired licensed planner. Okay, I retired just three years ago after a forty-five years of, uh. Great job. Um. As, as Ms. Gregory knows, I was the former city planner for the city of Plainfield for the last twenty-four years. So. I've been through a lot of these, but I have to say that this is the first time in all those years that I've actually had somebody. Buy on application to rezone. Based upon the current legal pre-existing non-conforming use. I don't think I've ever had that before.
So I haven't been doing this quite that long. I've only been practicing almost thirty years, I've been zoning and planning for about twenty-five.
Okay.
And I have also never seen anything quite like that.
Yeah.
I'm the guy in my office. When something weird comes. It lands on my desk, and that's what we have. This is a really.
But, but this is, but this is not weird. This is throughout every town. And what are we at? Five hundred and sixty-three, Vince? It's five hundred and sixty-three municipalities, I think now, or five sixty-five. I mean, five sixty-five. I mean, every town has these. And. Uh, Don, I mean, we, we spoke for thirty seconds beforehand. It was like my first question on here, you know, have they requested a letter? You know, have they requested a letter of nonconformity? No. Is there a C O for thirty-two apartments? Nobody knows. We mentioned about, you know, what's proper planning? Well, I think Ms. Gregor and I would agree that proper planning would not be to put in thirty-two units in the middle of a single-family zone. If we were doing this the opposite, and I were to ask you, would you come in and argue proper planning to put a thirty-two unit development in this?
Within sufficient parking.
Pardon?
Within sufficient parking.
That's right, you know. And, and bike racks, and bike, and bike racks. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not putting, I'm not trying to put you in a spot, but I don't think you'd say yeah, that's appropriate zoning.
In the middle of a single family.
Right, right. So I don't see how.
I understand what you're saying.
All right.
But I go back to it is a longstanding use, but for how many times you've said eighty-five years? It hasn't gone away. It's probably not going away. Most of the construction of it.
Right, and we all know the history, and I apologize for jumping there, but as you said, you know, it was thought, you know, seventy-five, back in nineteen seventy-five, whatever, when they developed municipal land use law, that gee, legal pre-existing nonconforming uses are just going to go away. Well, they haven't, and as you stated, they're not. So the zoning officers are sitting back there, Mr. Venegra. And I mean, I wrote many zoning officer letters for similar apartment structures in Plainfield. And the letter of nonconformity would state, you know, it's a legal use, it's allowed to continue. It, it seems to me that your client hasn't really advanced his argument procedurally, administratively, to get to this point. Be very upfront, I, I'm not, I'm very loathe to recommend a rezoning to allow this forty-five dwelling units an acre zoned in the midst of this called a one or a two-family zone. You know, proper, there are bad planning and zoning. You know, there's bad planning and zoning decisions all the time, and I just view that as a really bad zoning decision. Can you help me through?
Sure. Everybody on the board is, I don't have their own opinion on this. This is, this, I don't necessarily disagree with you. Sorry. We thought that this was, like I said, an easy lift. We just want to zone it for what has been there for eight decades. If you disagree, then you disagree, and my client will have to decide what they want to do to try and protect their interests, assuming they still want to go forward with the purchase. That may involve coming back and asking for a certificate of pre-existing nonconformity, although I think that is a waste of time. It doesn't really give them much protection. It doesn't solve the problem. The lender's not going to reduce the rate because of that. The other thing we thought was maybe we come and we ask for, you know, for the D variance, for approval from this board for what's already existing there. Or maybe we come and ask for what's existing there plus some minor change to justify the new relief, and then maybe the lender will be okay with that. It just seemed that this was an easier path forward for everybody, and it makes a lot of sense, given the historic use of the property. And that's why we're here. That's the only reason why we're here.
In the last paragraph within Ms. Gregory's report, it states that from a planning perspective, the rezoning is sensible. Now, I, I understand that, but sometimes planning a zoning isn't sensible. Like, I don't like the, that whole concept. I know Mr. Carney has an opinion on it too, about if a house is, there are two walls and a, what is it, two walls and a fireplace standing? You know, it can rebuild. As you know, the municipal land use law doesn't define partial destruction. So we're saying fifty percent. I agree with you that if something were to happen at here, it's not going to change. I might actually recommend to the board that we there's nothing sacred about fifty percent. It's not as if the New Jersey Supreme Court has said fifty percent is the magic number. Some towns go with monetary, you know, loss, or some towns go with a different number.
But Bill, that's not what's.
I understand. I'm looking at my fellow board members. I'm saying in cases like this, maybe what's good for the board, maybe, okay, I haven't thought it all the way through, is a recommendation to change what total destruction is, rather than go along with the rezoning to allow forty-five dwelling units per acre in the midst of a single-family zone.
Bill, I would probably go in the opposite direction from you if we open that part of the code, just so you know.
That's okay. That's why we're here to discuss. So, last question then. I, 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 I don't want to make a statement yet. I guess, I, I guess I don't see either the planning, I, I understand the sensibleness of it, but I don't see either, either the planning or the zoning rationale or legal rationale to go forward in this matter.
Respect your position.
Steve?
Yeah, and actually, there's going to be the issue of what the governing body is going to do. Because you can't make the argument it's consistent with the master plan. And in that case, they could still adopt the ordinance, but it's a higher let's say burden of proof. They need more votes. And, and they would have to justify that. So I, it's, it's kind of like a favor. I have no other way to describe it.
You thought you have to say it.
That's another step then.
And I'll just make one, one addition. And it's, it's just an opinion of mine, but you do know we have affordable housing requirements now. And I'm not saying that this would be predicated on, on whether or not this be, this would be recommended to go to before the board, but would the applicant be willing to lock into the fact that we, those thirty-six units, that would come up to about twenty percent affordable housing, which would be six to seven units of affordable housing? As those units became available, would the applicant be willing to to reduce those to affordable housing units?
I, I don't think that they would be willing to do that.
Okay.
And the reason is their purchase price is predicated on the record, which I had a look at it today. And I will tell you that this, you know, there is affordable housing with a capital A, and there's affordable housing with whatever. Capital A, it's in a term of art, means deed restricted for now forty years, affordable housing. And then there's housing that's affordable, and that's what this, there's not a single unit in this building that's, the rent is more than two thousand dollars. They're all basically between one and two thousand dollars. This is, this is housing that's affordable. It's, it's workforce housing. That's what my client wants to buy, manage, and improve. If we were to do that, those rents, some of them would decrease. It would not be able to sustain the purchase price. It wouldn't have slack. So I, I don't think that's something that my client would agree to.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, I would be loathe to amend our master plan, anything to go that far, create another zone just to, I mean, what it essentially sounds like is a favor. So that, you know, the purchaser can get a lower price with the lender. That essentially seems like what it's coming down to. So I, I would just be loathe for the borough to take on that kind of that kind of work for, for that. It doesn't seem to have any sort of benefit for us in, in the larger sense.
So, so what I will suggest to you is that this nonconformity that's impacting the financing directly impacts the value. I've not looked at this from a tax appeal standpoint, but I think if you make the zoning comply with what's on the property, you increase the value of it. And that, that is a benefit to the community. Because if, if the seller can't sell it at the price that they've targeted, my client doesn't pay that price. It's something less than that, because we can't get it done. And the property's not worth perhaps what it's assessed at.
Well, are you suggesting that property as presently assessed is, is over assessed?
I, I don't know. I haven't looked.
So then it could even just go in the other direction, right?
It could, but at least then it'll match. There'll be, there, there will be a way to tie the zoning to the value. And zoning impacts value.
Right, but the point is, without us even knowing what the current assessment is and how the value relates to that current assessment, it's an interesting statement. I will say this, Mr. Chairman, I was very impressed by your discussion of affordable with a capital A versus affordable with a small a and the real world impact of what was going on with that site. I found that to be a lot more persuasive than your tax assessment.
I did sound prepared for tax.
Oh, you brought it up. It seems to me every issue that you bring up, that then I ask the follow-up question, oh, we're not prepared to do that, well then, maybe don't introduce that subject.
Mr. Chairman, just two last things. I'm very glad the mayor broke the word benefit, because I did have some notes here. I failed to state them. What's in the report is there's zoning this property not be spot zoning and is not benefiting the property owner. Well, I really question that, because if there was no benefit to the property owner, he wouldn't be here. I mean, clearly, there's a benefit that a property owner, that benefit is financial, not, not planning or zoning, but there certainly is a benefit to that property owner. And going back to what, what the mayor said, I don't really see this board, I don't see it to be proper for this board to grant what's being requested, because what, what's being requested most certainly is a benefit for the property owner. It is certainly not a benefit for the municipality. You're saying there might be additional taxes. I don't know about that, but as you know, we can't base planning decisions on taxes.
No, I, I think usually when we talk about spot zoning and the benefits, property gets spot zoned to increase the height, increase the density.
Sure.
That's commonly what we see with spots. That's not what we're asking for. This is not a harm that spots.
This is.
What my colleague stated earlier had was that generally, when a unit such as, such as a such nonconforming structure such as this gets destroyed, it's allowed to be rebuilt. Now legally, you know, you have to go through the process, but the Mr. Chairman may remember a conversation we had years ago about a legal nonconforming structure, I think it was a two-family, which was on Third.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And talked about the foundation. And, you know, the foundation is not destroyed, but, you know, the rest of the building is. And the code required a larger side yard variance than was existing on the site. And I, I don't have your exact words, but basically it came down to so wait a second, this family loses their house. It's totally gone. They lost all their possessions. And, and now you're asking this board to now tell them to knock down this existing foundation and move it over four feet in order to match the current zoning? And correct me if I'm wrong, okay? I believe what you said was, I'd grant that variance every day. And I think it's the same thing here. We can't predict what's going to happen, but I think these garden apartments are going to stay in their current bricks or new bricks, you know, down the road. And I think we can do that without having to rezone it.
Anyone else on the board? Have any questions of this applicant? Okay, I won't, I won't open it up to the general public, because this is not a, a resolution or an amendment, but it's a recommendation to bring it before the board, before the council. So with that, do I hear someone raise?
I assume you have no more witnesses.
I don't think so.
For the record.
Okay. So with that, do I hear a motion or a recommendation on proceeding?
I will make a motion not to recommend a rezoning of this property.
Okay, roll call, please, Adele.
Mayor Blumenstock?
Epstein.
Ms. Lysak?
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Carney?
Epstein.
Ms. Vilagio?
Aye.
Mr. Nearstead?
Aye.
Mr. Barkin?
Aye.
Ms. Bianco?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
And Chair Greed?
Aye.
Okay, we appreciate the, your interest and your presence.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's continue with just some new business. And Kathy's going to present a preliminary overview of proposed changes to the sign ordinance. And this is tricky, just to, just to get off you on what.
Yeah, just some, just some feedback. I I handed each one of you a summary of the changes that we're proposing to look at, based upon our meeting that we had a month and a half ago with the a representative of the Small Business Advisory Board. We don't want to go any further until we get some feedback from the board what your thoughts are. One of the main items that the representative said was that they wanted flags, I'm not sure if I'm saying the right verbiage for, or what it is, but it's a flag sign, you know, the feathered flag sign. We understood what she was saying, and it, it would help some businesses, especially if they're new. So we're proposing that like we set forth a couple items that they must abide by. But that they must have a zoning permit. With the permit, I'm assuming that they have to have a survey showing exactly showing exactly the location of the proposed flag. The flag sign must not be in the right way, except if they're except if the businesses themselves do not have a setback, which we have that, I'm, I think on Center Street and on North Avenue. For those businesses, there must be some type of, some type of specific insurance requirements. If they want to put the flag up. The flag itself should not be up. If they're not open. For new businesses, the flag signs can be up for no more than no more than two months. And for existing businesses, there's a difference in that. The other item that they asked for was allowing signs to, to, the electronic signs to move to, 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 to change messages. We felt that a sign that's always moving is not good. But if a, but if a sign like we have outside here, if there, like if a message just changes, we thought that would be acceptable. I don't know what the rest of the board feels of that. And there's some other minor stuff that we're also looking at.
When you say moving is like actual moving parts, is that what you're?
No, moving sign, you know, digital sign.
Oh, okay.
The, the digital sign that always moves. But if a sign just, you know, the message just changes.
Like our. All right, so you're saying it's just still, it's a still message.
Say a small message, but it changes.
The message is just not going to be flashing and.
Correct. And the other thing that they wanted. And the other thing that they wanted, that we will not recommend is a sign that has lights on it, like those sandwich signs, sandwich board signs, portable signs. We won't, we wouldn't, we didn't want to recommend that because of safety.
Kathy, on the flag, on the flags, on the flags that you better propose, do you have any kind of dimension requirements on those flags?
We didn't look at that because, because I think they're just standard.
Yeah, but you never know what the future standard.
That's why we said at the last sentence, I said, we're going to have Victor's office look at it.
Yeah, I would have.
Because.
Limitations on it.
That kind of technical, technical stuff, there'd be more of that for that.
So would a regular sandwich kind of sign be allowed or just one with lights is not allowed?
No portable sign with lights.
Period.
No portable sign is like a sandwich board.
And they're permitted.
Correct. Sandwich sign is permitted, but not one with lights on it.
So I have a question, Kathy. If, if message boards with lights wouldn't be permitted, but electronic signs with like changing messages? Do you see the difference in?
Are permitted. Electronic signs are permitted now because they have more different stores.
You're not permitted. So it would be a physical light shining on the board versus. Where would that lights up?
Which, which sign on South Avenue?
The, the welding guy? That sign, that sign's not permitted.
The only.
This here, the only reason.
What I recall are the signs that move, that, that constantly, digital signs that.
All right, well, that's what that is. That's where the wording is constantly.
Okay, but the message just, but what we're proposing is if the message will change, that would be permitted.
Okay, the.
Without it moving.
I believe it's a welding place and I sit corrected.
There's a couple of signs in town that are not, that, that do that, that are not.
That are not permitted, right.
They are not permitted.
The one that's in front here, I've always kind of smiled as I go past it because in my mind, that sign's not permitted either. But it's municipal.
It's municipal.
Exactly, exactly, but you know, but I've kind of smiled because in many ways, and I realize we're in tape, but in many ways, you know, we're doing it, we don't allow anybody else to do it.
Yeah, and we.
So this would codify it now.
We want to help the businesses. And if they're asking for something that we can, that we could do without it being too much of a, too much of a hazard, I, I, I think, you know, I think, you know, we're recommending that we make these changes, but ultimately is
Right.
Like, like everybody here's decision. Now what about the days that, that we have for new businesses for two months? For existing businesses, 28 days in the entire year.
Well, the, the flag signs themselves, I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks, just as you're saying, what does everybody think? I've never liked them. I thought it makes the towns look like a circus.
But everybody has some.
And if everybody jumps off the bridge.
You know, I mean.
But what I was going to say, okay, was I don't like them. Okay, I really don't think it would, it's a benefit to the municipality to allow them. But you know, you mentioned helping businesses. You know, if we're talking limited periods of time for new businesses, you know, special things, you know, I'll take a deep breath and I could, I could live with that, you know, as long as there is that restriction. But I mean, you may or may not, you know, like this, but I was biking into, to work one day and I stopped and made note of, I think there were about a dozen signs on South Avenue, not in Garwood, but in Plainfield. And the town looked like a circus. It looked like all this feathering fluttering stuff all over the place and that's a word fluttering, yeah. So in to help businesses, if this is something that they want, it's a tough environment out there, it's a tough business climate. If we have restrictions in terms of, you know, the, the standard stuff, time, was it time, height, size?
Right.
Limited in terms of what, what's out there. I was very, you know, I could live with it. I was very happy to see that you're not recommending go with the, the sandwich board signs that are, that are lit. I really think that is a safety issue. Going with the up-to-date definitions, absolutely. So if, if, if the ordinance is, is, you know, restrictive, and I know, again, Mr. Venega is back there, you know, he and I have written sign ordinances and sign ordinances are the worst. I mean, they are so difficult. They are so complicated.
We're going to be speaking with Gabe.
I can see Mr. Baylor smile, you know, he's looking forward to writing. You know, I mean, you know, let's take a third example, a turnpike, okay, you know, you got the signs. And you know, they're on a, on a timer, you know, I think that has to be, I don't know, the, the time, 40 seconds, 35 seconds, whatever. That's how long they'd be lit. Because people were afraid that if they're constantly changing, people's eyes would be taken off the roadway. And you're going much slower here, obviously I'm not making that comparison, but you know, there are restrictions. So as long as I think we have those restrictions.
So you want to tighten it up?
And I understand what Kathy's doing, it's just, hey, putting it out there, what do you think?
Like, we just want to put it out there. We expect to have a draft, a draft draft for the board to look at after it's looked at by Victor's office first. We, we expect to have a draft at the June meeting. Okay, because it's not going to, this type of ordinance will, you know, be because it's going to be restrictive. It'll take time. It's not as simple, oh, we're going to change, you know, five feet to seven feet type of thing. You know, like on the flag sign, well, I just want the flags, okay? I don't want to see the man, you know, that, you know, that man that goes back.
The wacky waving old man. Turl Road going after Route 22.
Yeah, so, you know, will it be restrictive? Yes, you know, and, and the other thing we have to look at is with the flag signs is whether or not, like we want the pole that's in the ground, okay? The pole that, I mean, that, that, you know, that has to go in the ground, the, the pole part, not, not a base. Because a base could possibly flip.
It's also a tripping hazard.
Yeah, so that's the other thing that we look, that we're going to look at also. You know, then we have to have the town look at the insurance requirements that they'd want if it's on our right of way.
And one other thing I brought up to council before is, you know, we have too many ordinances that are written that, that are not really being enforced because no one dared to enforce them. And you know, these signs are going to be out in the evening when the only enforcement entity that's working is the police. And I don't think the police are going to want to enforce the signage, right?
Well.
So.
They're not.
I, I didn't want to go that far. So we might want to think about, okay, who's going to enforce this to?
Well, you can make it that these get taken in.
Yeah.
Well, that's, but if it's not taken in.
The normal.
Because the sandwich board.
But if it's, but if it's not taken in, who's enforcing that?
Right, well, that's why I don't think.
Competitors.
Should be kept out overnight.
No, they, they can't be.
Competitors, and I think, I think any one of, any person who resides in an area might have something to say about it, including me, if I'm, if I'm driving through town and I see a flag up at 12 o'clock at night.
Okay, and all that I'm saying, okay, is I could point out about six ordinances off the top of my head that simply aren't enforced because they're broken after hours. So if we're going to allow this, and obviously they want it, you know, maybe not at midnight, but they want it, you know, in the evening hours. We just, I don't have an answer, I'm not saying I have an answer, I'm just saying. You need to think about who's going to enforce.
Yeah, we all agree that there's got to be restrictions, additional restrictions put on these.
Can only do so much.
Sure.
You know, and it's, it's not our, you know, we, but.
If this comes.
What does everybody feel about the days, like the amount of time that the flags can be on?
I, I think that's reasonable. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the days.
What about the mention?
Well, that's what we're going to look at.
That's going to be sized in, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to look at, because, you know, a couple of people mentioned the, mentioned the height and all that, but we're going to look at that.
Yeah.
But we just want to be reasonable with the amount of times per year.
And if this were to come before council, several of the ordinances we've done recently that I've been involved in, we've been very specific about designating who's enforcing. Because I've noticed that was a, you know, especially in older parts of the code that may have been carried over from when it was whatever it was, and it was recodified into like the numbering system we have now. I think some of that stuff might have just been holdovers from, from what was there already.
That, that's another, that's, that's what I'm, I am finding more and more when I look at the code. Like a lot of it has to be updated.
Yeah.
Some things weren't taken out when something were, was updated. Now, it's been happening, it's nothing that happened the last five years. It's been the past 25 years when we made changes, you know, like on this part of the code, not realizing there was another section that referenced it in a different section.
The cross referencing has been very challenging.
I think that that is not an easy thing to do. It's very time consuming, very time consuming, and it should be done by a professional.
It's been a discussion.
You know.
Over the years. It always seems to get the chopping block at the end, budget wise.
Something that should be done, you know, can we do it chapter by chapter? Yeah, but you do one chapter, well, it, it can't just be chapter by chapter because. Look at it as a whole, like it was easy with the bulk changes, okay? Because it's really only that one section is bulk. But when your signs are mentioned here, signs could be mentioned over there. Like affordable housing can be mentioned there, but it could also be mentioned over there. I'm just using that as an example. So that's, that is something that is, is, will take time, but I think it is necessary. Maybe that is something that we could look at to do in 2026. That it can't be done now.
Yeah, I've basically asked for that every year I've been on, but it's just.
It's one of those items that hits the chopping block at the end when you're tightening up the budget. But one of these years, that's.
But it's.
Hey, there was a few things this year that normally got the chopping block when it happened.
Gabe, do you have it in common with the Raja that? Excuse me.
I mean, this, my, my comment is, do we want to do a whole deep dive into the sign ordinance? And rather than just look at the flag and, you know, first of all, digital signs aren't permitted.
Yeah. And the answer to your, to your question is yes.
Okay.
Like, like it isn't that long.
Yeah.
It, it, it's only like five pages. And it looks at each zone, okay? The answer would be yes.
The council is actually looking to amend part of that to just clarify political signs. Because every year we go through the, it's a little vague. So we will be clarifying it to what our zoning officer enforces finally.
Can we, before you finalize?
Yeah, it's really just a one line.
We can, we can.
How big, we're just putting how big it is.
Yeah.
Right.
Specifically because it, what it does is it refers to another section. So rather than refer to another section, we're just putting it into that section.
But if it affects this part of it or part of the code, can we just incorporate?
Sure.
The new budget into this one ordinance?
Probably. Because it's. That way we only have to do it once.
We'll have to do it once, yeah.
Okay, so basically we're taking away with this, it's a work in progress?
Correct.
Okay.
And thank you, everybody, for your comments.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for taking it on.
Did David have a question or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I apologize.
I, I want to get some clarity on things. Do we have current code requirements for business signs? All right, so this is just additional for, for non, miscellaneous signs that aren't part of fixed signs, okay? So we, we got into talk, you know, the conversation of, you know, the board, the borough has a sign, you know, in front of theirs. That's a fixed sign, that's different than what we're talking about here, right? So when you say allowing signs which change messages, we're not talking about the sign that's mounted on the building. We're talking about a portable sign that's put in front of the business?
No.
So how is this all of a sudden?
We're talking.
Working with the current code?
Because right now, right now.
The current council doesn't use most of these flag signs.
So I mean, if we're going to look at what's allowed, what, you're saying flag?
Flag signs are.
No, no, here, we have allowing, allowing signs which change messages.
That's the proposal, right.
Yeah, because right now.
Why is that a fixed sign on a building? I, I'm not understanding what that is.
It would be a fixed sign on a building.
Okay, so.
A digital sign on a building.
So I think we need to look at this more comprehensive, like, you know, the whole code for signs, I mean, are, are cantilever signs allowed? What's the material? Is it an elevation? Certain towns only allow wood signs with gold leaf.
We have that.
Saying this is, this is just going to be, this one bullet point is just going to be put into another line.
No, it's, there's, there's different sections under this article, you know, 137, okay? This is, this is just.
This is just random, like these are the changes we want to add to the current code.
This is a draft of what we were looking, what, what the businesses were looking for, okay?
Yeah, I understand that.
But under 137, there's different sections.
Yeah. And so each pieces were going to a different section as.
Yes, like what Bill mentioned, you know, like we have, oh, what they're made of, what the, what the square footage, the maximum square footage is, that's all within the code.
And when this is plugged in, Victor, Victor's going to be reviewing it and it will be converted into whatever.
Yeah, and so when Bill was saying like the, the welder sign, it's not up to code compliance. It's, I was trying to feed into like, you know, how are we going to address all this in one stroke?
Well.
Well, that, that's an easy one because it's not permitted, that's just enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, what, what, what Bill's saying is, you know, yes, it does happen and should they not do it? No, they shouldn't do it, but they do.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any commentary before we kind of wrap this up?
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for your comments.
Thank you. Okay, I have one bill and claim here, and that's from our legal end. Verada, Fraser and Forrester, an amount of $2,000 for the March and May meetings.
That's today.
Up to the minute.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second, or as a favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll just finally just make a note, I see nobody in the audience, so I'm not going to open it up to the public. But prior to adjournment, our next meeting is critical. It's on May 28th, it's the fourth round of affordable housing for us. And it's going to be open to the general public specifically, and that's meeting is specific to that, to that affordable housing. And that'll be all night, whatever the length of time it takes. So with that, we'll see you, hopefully all of you on May 28th.
I'm, I'm sorry, you didn't call for a new business section, I did have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One brief thing I wanted to.
Absolutely, bring it up.
I'll keep it as brief as I can. I wanted to see if the, if the board would be amenable to directing Adele, just to.
Uh, just to inquire with the owner of Dietrich's as to, um. If they were ever planning on, uh, executing what they brought before this.
I got a message from, from Jen and I already, and Adele, I think, has, has already looked at that.
Um, so just, it's, what prompted me is I saw some action from that, from that owner in a neighboring town.
I've, I've seen it also.
I, and I, I understand, um, we were on a, an email chain, I understand there's nothing to enforce as they haven't begun. Anything that we could enforce, but I would like to see if they, you know, plan on continuing with, with what was.
Are you ever doing this? If you are, what's the timeline?
Um, but we gave them.
We did give them.
Timeline to start, and that was ninety days?
It was.
Yeah, it was ninety days for the first phase, and then, and then after the first phase, they had another. Six months to start the second phase.
I agree, I agree.
So should we just send a letter saying? As per the, uh, letter that was sent to you on, uh, you know, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, uh. We accept your decision at this, that application is done.
I, I mean, I, I, I know that, I don't know, Gabe or, or Don, what, what there is to do other than just inquire about status, but.
Well, I think the answer is, you can always inquire about status, but whether or not you can force somebody to affect.
But, but what happens if they go and begin? And they, they've, obviously that extension has come and gone, does that? Do they have to file?
You, you got it.
Yeah. That's, that's my question.
But Victor?
But.
You can't.
There's no changes to the zone. And it's, it is, you're. If there's no, you're not protected from zoning change, final rule of protection from zoning change.
Okay.
And acting on a permit, protection for zoning change. If there's no changes to the zone for setbacks or whatever would affect, then that proof, that approval stays valid.
So the, so then in essence, like that, that timeline, well, that was put in there is.
Meaningless.
Yeah.
So it's not, that wasn't enforceable, the timelines.
Wasn't it?
Doesn't matter, again, normally.
Was it two years that they have to do something?
Again, the.
It's no void.
Change. So normally, your, your approval is good for getting listening to change in the project, only than a band. In my interpretation, I read now.
Okay.
I stopped their, uh, buck leading advice on wine from her. Um, I know she was, her sons are bargaining with her business. I think the sons opened the other business over there at Westfield. There's a large wine shop in Westfield that was affecting some of her business, uh, on North Avenue. She says she's still gonna go ahead with it.
Alright, well, I, I mean, I've got some official.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with sending out a status letter.
So that she has to reply, you know, to the board.
I, I, I have, I have, it's, I'm strong, I have done that, and I'm told the same thing you told. Oh, you know, yeah, 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 no, no, I haven't gotten that. You've gotten that? No, um, yeah, I'm kind of the same response, but yes, we are, you know, um. We are gonna make, so there's nothing wrong with sending a status letter.
I guess my answer is, yeah, a letter of inquiry, we can't demand and answer anything to it, it's just asking a question, right?
Right. On a better way, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. With that, um, is there any further business? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Uh, I'll make, I'll make that motion. Second. Or as in favor? Aye. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
I got it on pause. I only gotta go five blocks and not hear anything.
I'm sorry, that's like.
Yeah, I'll send them, I just. I said I will, it's just that, no, we talked about it, and I said I will, I just. Busy, so I.
I think we have to keep in mind.